Good evening, everybody. I'd like to go ahead and call the Placerville City Council meeting for January 22nd to order. Would you all please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. And again, welcome to all our audience members and to our distinguished department heads and staff that are present this evening. Could the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Acuna?
Here.
Councilmember Borelli?
Here.
Councilmember Thomas will be noted as absent. Vice Mayor Saragosa?
Here.
Councilmember Taylor?
Here.
Thank you, Regina. And it should be noted that Councilmember Thomas is absent this evening on a pre-approved absence. He had to be at another meeting that could not be rescheduled, so we will work without him this evening. Moving on to item three, announcements and presentations to the public, brief comments by city council members. I will start on my right. Councilmember Taylor?
I attended the League of California Cities Conference this past week, which was a great opportunity. Thank you for the City Placerville for plans to do that. Michael Saragos was there as well. And it was kind of an orientation, really good orientation and training and overview of, you know, the city's interactions with the state, so.
And you were down there how many days?
Three days.
Three days. Full days?
Full days.
Awesome.
Two full days, one half day, yeah.
Great that you were able to...
It's a great, good way to meet people, too.
Yeah. Well, we appreciate you taking that extra time out of your schedule to go down and do that orientation. I think it's very important.
Yeah.
Anything else?
That's it.
That was a busy week. Councilmember Borelli, it's been a busy time of year.
I know. We keep meeting at all these places that we go.
Did you have some comments this evening?
I went to the, I attended the, the...
There's a lot of them.
See, where do I start? No, the installation dinner for the...
Oh, yes. Chamber.
Yeah, and you were there and several people. And I just want to congratulate all the incoming officers, and they just did a beautiful job, as they always do. And I also attended the Fire Safe Council meeting, and that was very, very interesting. And I just, the room was just full of enthusiastic folks, along with our representative, David Zelinski, and a lot of other people that have started fire safe councils, and all the areas were really covered. And everybody is just full of all kinds of ideas and wanting to help solve our problems, so I was encouraged. It was great. And I went, oh, Moore Workshop had their fundraiser, and, gosh, the people that were there, it was wonderful, and they, it was pretty obvious that they did make a lot of money. For those that don't know, Moore Workshop received a federal grant for around $4 million. It's something that their director, Susie Davies, has been trying to obtain for three years now, and she's worked really hard, and she got it. And she needs to raise another $1 million from the public here. But that's just such a wonderful organization, and so I was encouraged by all that I saw, and I know we're going to do it. So I think that was about it.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Saragosa?
Yes, it is tis the season for events, I think, in January. So with my colleagues, I was down at the League of Cities Training Wednesday through Friday. It was great to be able to meet council members, mayors from across the state, as well as other city managers as well. There's about quarter of the attendees were city managers, which I thought was kind of interesting as well.
Well, so we should have sent Cleve.
We could have had Cleve there as well, exactly. No, I don't think Cleve needs more, that one probably, but maybe for the newer city managers, I don't know.
Maybe Mr. Warren.
Mr. Warren, absolutely. We do have to get him to the next city manager's training. So we were there, and it was great. I thought the training, we got some good ideas, and also they gave us a great legislative update as well, some of the things going on in Sacramento, especially the housing legislation that's being proposed that came out last year by Senator Scott Wiener. But it's kind of mirrors closely to where the governor wants to go in terms of building more housing and really trying to quadruple the amount of housing we're currently even doing, which is a task in and of itself, since we've never, ever in the history of the state built that many houses at one time, what that means to all of us and local government. So, and then also with the rest of my colleagues, I went to the Moore Workshop as well with the mayor and councilmember Borelli. I was also at the Boys and Girls Club Dinner the previous Saturday at the EDC Fairgrounds, and both the Boys and Girls Club as well as Moore. I just want to thank all of the community and businesses and residents. I mean, people did a phenomenal job of coming out, supporting these organizations, and raising a ton of money for them. So I'm confident they'll be able to hit their goals as well. But they really did a fantastic job and was happy to be there that represent the city. Thank you.
That's it. Thank you, Michael. And let me also...
Can I do a quick follow-up with?
Sure.
They raised, the Boys and Girls Club, I forgot about that one. They raised $300,000. Isn't that wonderful?
That's amazing. $300,000 in one evening fundraiser.
A lot of $5,000 donations during the live auction. So it was great to see that. So thank you for the number.
And that was for the Boys and Girls Club. And then Moore did not ask...
I haven't heard their numbers.
It was in the tens of thousands, for sure.
Our community supports our...
Well, Michael, thank you also for taking extra time out of your schedule and attending the League's workshop in Sacramento last week. I know it was, it is important, and I appreciate all of the council members that attended. For myself, I would just like to, first of all, I'd like to thank all of our staff members that were involved in keeping a watch on things last week, as the weather kind of went this way and that way, and I believe we may have dodged a couple of bullets a couple of the nights, but it was entertaining nonetheless several times. So all of those folks that answered the phone when it rang after hours, thank you very much, and for also working safe during regular hours. It's always a challenging time when Mother Nature does her thing. I would also like to acknowledge that David Zelinski, who appeared very briefly at this meeting two weeks ago, and announced that despite the government shutdown, he was going to go ahead and move forward and launch the Placerville Fire Safe Council. He is a very organized and determined person, because he got that launched, and they are meeting as we speak for the very first time. And I did get a copy of that agenda, and it is very impressive, very well organized, very thoughtful, very goal-oriented, and it's just wonderful to think that there is such organization already. Of course, they're using the benefit of some of the other experience from fire safe councils, all to our benefit. So we look forward to hearing much more from that group many, many times the rest of the year and four years to come, because this is going to be an ongoing effort to address the new realities for wildland fire danger here in Placerville. So good luck to them as they meet for the very first time. And I also wanted to recognize Susie Davies and the Moore Workshop for the work that they have done for decades in this community, the tremendous support that was shown last Saturday. The Old Fairgrounds building was packed. I didn't think you could heat that building up, but it was hot inside, even though it was very cold outside. Tremendous fundraising effort. She very proudly has, they have submitted their plans, they are in plan check. That's a huge step for a project like that, and now they get ready to move into their temporary facility. So we wish them nothing but the best, good luck as they move forward with that tremendous undertaking. If there's no other comments, I'll move on to item 3.2, which is their item that I've requested, the Caltrans update on Highway 50. I know staff has met with the Caltrans construction team that is being put together. They do, they have not announced a firm project date yet or any project details for the 2019 version of the Highway 50 Mosquito Road Bridge deck replacement project. Now, last week in the Mountain Democrat, there was a little too much ambition, and the article suggested that the freeway was going to be closed in all, for both lanes in all directions, and that's not quite what they have in mind. It will be open to one lane east and one lane west for 12 days, 24 hours a day. Still a substantial impact. They still anticipate a one-hour travel time through Placerville because of that delay. So you just be assured that city staff and also Woody DeLorean over at El Dorado County Transportation Commission is working closely to develop a stakeholders' meeting that'll include community members, organizations, public service organizations, and safety throughout the western slope to address this upcoming Caltrans project. So we will get more details as they come in. Moving on to item four, closed session report. Good evening, Mr. Driscoll. We did not have a closed session, so I believe you have nothing to report.
Absolutely correct, Mayor.
Trying to get him to say something. Thank you very much, Mr. Driscoll, adoption of the agenda. Can I have a motion for adoption?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Bradley, seconded by Councilmember Saragosa. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda is adopted. Moving on to ceremonial matters, we have none this evening. Brings us to items seven and 7.1. This is a time in the meeting where the public is allowed to address the city council on any item that is not on this evening's agenda. We ask that you restrict those discussions to items that are pertinent to the business of the council, and of course, we ask that you present yourself in a respectful and polite manner. Is there anyone that wishes to address the council this evening on a non-agendized item? Seeing no one approaching the podium, I'll go ahead and close the item. Mr. Morris, were there any written communications this evening?
Just this one item that the city clerk handed out tonight that you have in front of you regarding homeless, and you can address that if you want to during that item, which is 12.1 on your agenda.
All right, thank you, Mr. Morris. And yes, we all do have a copy of a report from the Nevada County Supervisors purchasing a homeless center, and we will take that up at the appropriate moment. All right, moving on to the consent calendar. All items will be considered under one motion unless the council member wishes to have an item pulled or if there are any discussions. I'm going to go ahead and ask to pull item 8.6. Is there any other council member wishing to pull or address an item?
Mr. Mayor, if staff could speak briefly to item 8.6.
Yes, sir.
Staff received an email from the State Department of Housing and Community Development late last week after we had completed the form and placed it on your agenda. Basically, the form that we used is no longer valid. The state has revised the form. It drills down with a lot more detail, so we're going to have, so we would recommend that you just continue the item and then continue it off calendar, and staff will prepare the new form and then re-agendize it for your consideration.
With that information, and I would go ahead and, we'll go ahead and pull that item. Mr. Rivas, thank you very much for pointing that out. No doubt, the state has made the new form much more complicated, because this form is actually very simple for anyone in the public to read and clearly identify where we are with our various housing criteria and the requirements that the state expects us to meet. Do you have any idea when you'd be able to bring it back?
We hope to bring it back probably within the month, as quickly as possible. We have the new form, and as you stated, Mr. Mayor, the state's asking for a lot of additional information regarding the housing and the type of housing we built, the final, the dates and...
Oh, boy.
A lot of detailed information, but we'll get it to you as quickly as possible.
Very good. Well, I appreciate that.
Pierre, with that relatively new, did they just come out with this new form? I'm just wondering if this is based on new administration.
Yes, the form just came out, I believe, last Thursday or Friday.
Jeez. Thank you.
Even though this was agendized, there's Mr. Attorney sitting down there, this was agendized, but not in a timely enough manner to use this form? I mean, there's got to be a cutoff date that they have to deal with.
Yeah, I'm sure there is, Pierre.
I respond to that, too. We checked with them, said, "We've already done the report."
Yeah.
"Here it is," and they said, "No, you have to use the new form." So if that answers your question.
Typical what the state will say. Thank you.
Just real quick, if I may, the report is due to the state April 1st, so we have until April 1st to actually complete and submit the form to the state.
I appreciate that, Pierre. I'm just trying to see if we could save you some extra steps, because it's, I believe the existing form is very adequate, especially in a small, small community like ours. It's not very hard to track. In fact, very exciting for a lot of folks to track it. We get a few new houses each year, so thank you very much for that. So the council has heard that we will be pulling item 8.6. Let me ask if there's any member of the public that wishes to comment on the balance of the consent calendar items. Seeing no one approaching the podium, is there a motion?
Moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Could the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Acuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. And Pierre, we look forward to seeing the new and improved. Thank you for trying. Moving on to item 10, we have an ordinance this evening, and this is the second time we've seen this item, and this would be to waive the second reading and adopt an ordinance, amending the Title 10 zoning ordinance, adding the cannabis business overlay. Pierre, would you be giving the report on that?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Just real briefly...
Excuse me, I have to recuse myself.
Oh, shoot. Pardon me, Mr. Rivas.
I'm sorry, Pierre, I have to recuse myself, so.
We will wait while, Councilmember Bradley, and the reason that you are recusing yourself is?
Because I'm a property owner in the overlay zone, and might be a contact...
Right, thank you very much. So the clerk will note that Councilmember Borelli will leave the chamber.
Take my bag.
Yeah. We will wait till you get into the secret booth. Okay, we'll go ahead again. Thank you, Pierre.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This item was just last considered at your January 8th meeting, where you waived, where you introduced the ordinance, waived the first reading. There was considerable debate, but in the end, the council directed staff basically to make some modifications to the maps, and I'll briefly go over those maps. No changes were made to the ordinance text, by the way. So I have a pointer here, and I'll try and point them out. Essentially, looking at the map then, that would be on your, on your, I'll just put the laser point on her, it'd be the west map. And looking at the west map, what staff did was we deleted two parcels that were owned by El Dorado County. One is where the Veterans Memorial is, and the other one, Hall, and the other one is where the county museum is. So we removed those. We also, and I just want to call your attention, because this was more staff-initiated, we deleted a small parcel right at Peros and Placerville Drive. And the reason we did that is because that is a city-owned parcel. So we didn't want to zone any city-owned parcels with a cannabis. And then if you look as well, too, you can see we've retained everything that was within that island that we spoke about last time, and that would be just north of Placerville Drive, south of Peros Road and Cold Springs. But all the parcels then lying north, these are all to be deleted per your direction. So this map should reflect council direction. And then the other map, we've only made one change, and that was the addition of one small parcel on Broadway Court, directly across the street from where the Mosquito Outfitters is, there at Mosquito, or behind the Main Street Auto. And so that was the only change we made to that map. So with that, staff hasn't received any written comments since your last meeting. So staff is recommending that you waive the second reading of the ordinance, which would amend both Title 10, adding Section 10528, and then also would add two exhibits to the zoning maps, two adopt said ordinance, and then three, finding the ordinance is category exempt from SEQA, and direct staff to file a notice of exemption with the county recorder's office. That concludes staff's report. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Thank you, Pierre. Council members have any questions for staff?
No.
Karen?
No.
All right. I'll go ahead and open the meeting up to the public and invite any member of the public that wishes to comment on item 10.1.
I'm Brian Sauner. I'm a parent of a student at middle school and also a member of the school board. I appreciate your removing the north side of Cold Springs Road. However, right across the street, you have allowed continued opportunities to rent and create those facilities, right across the street from where our school bus stops and where children are walking during the day. And that, we didn't seem to be able to communicate the importance of not having that, that close to where our kids are. And I'm also concerned, because we have the two rehab facilities, which we excluded, but right across the street from them, you've said it's okay. Plus, we have, you have zoned the area there to the, to the right of it on Cold Springs Road for low-income housing, and across the street from that, you're saying it's okay. I'm finding that a little hard to connect, that it wouldn't be okay to have it on the north side of the street, but it's okay to have it on the south side of the street. So I would encourage you to take another hard look at that, because we have children walking on that street all the time. It's not a four-lane divided highway. We're talking about a simple two-lane street. And to have them be able to stand there waiting for the bus, looking across the street at cannabis shops would be inappropriate. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Does someone else wish to address the council on item 10.1?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Rod Miller, El Dorado County Growers Alliance and Metro Commercial Realty. You had a great discussion at the last meeting, particularly about this, this area, the Peros Road area, and I think you developed a reasonable compromise, particularly towards the end of Peros. It's hundreds of feet away from residents. There are no sidewalks. Where the school bus goes, it's at the far end of Cold Springs Road. It's nowhere near an excellent site for a cannabis micro-business would be located, which perhaps would be the facility that raises the most cannabis tax revenue of any of the commercial cannabis businesses that you have in town. I'll challenge the other applicants to raise more tax money for the city of Placerville. And I mean, just this whole idea that, that young people see a cannabis business, maybe they don't even really recognize it, and it's going to suddenly, you know, convert their thinking into troubled, troubled youth. I think that's just a really flawed assumption about why young people have problems. People have problems because of developmental issues, because they're treating their own traumas. And what I would suggest, I mean, for my fellow cannabis business applicants and the concerned folks, let's all join together and, and work to provide funding for the New Morning Youth and Family Services. They're the organization that's in the best position to really help young people here in our community. They're in Placerville. They serve, they provide the counselors for all the schools. They have a youth shelter. They're having a fundraiser February 23rd. Let's, let's all go there. Let's raise some, let's, let's raise $300,000 for them. They really need it. They would recommend putting five counselors in each school. They have contracts with the school districts to provide the counselors. Let's support them. Let's do something about improving the conditions that young people develop in. Let's really help them get mental health services, get counseling, the things that could really truly make a difference in how they develop and how they live their adult lives later on. So please support the compromise that you made last week and vote the cannabis zoning overlay in. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, sir. I forgot to mention that we do have a three-minute rule, and thank you, Mr. Wishman, for energizing the clock. Someone else wish to address the council on this item? Good evening.
Evening. Kelly Chisano, representing Pure Life Collective, Diamond Springs. I think, I want to thank the staff, the mayor, everybody that's put time and energy into this. I think you, you know, again, I commend you on all the work, and considering all the many variables that do play into making something like this actually feasible and workable, and making sure there's a balance for the community and the business. And I think you guys have done a good job, so thank you.
Thank you, sir. Someone else wish to address the council on the cannabis overlay? All right, seeing no one else, we do have our ad hoc committee member in the audience, Mr. Kaleri. Did you have any comments this evening, sir?
No.
Thank you. All right, I'll go ahead and, if no one else wishes to address the council on this, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing on the item and bring it back to the council and staff for action. Are there any other comments or questions for staff on this item, or is someone prepared to make a motion? Mr.?
Mayor, could I just make one comment regarding...
You sure can. Oh, yes.
The question that was, that came up, actually, I probably should make this under the next item, because it's under our application process, but I just want to read one statement here that we've included in our application process, and this is, let me find it here, I had it a second ago. So we added this language in our description of evaluation criteria. Excuse me. Locations that are within 250 feet of non-statutory sensitive uses that involve children or persons under 21 years of age, such as school bus stops, libraries, et cetera, may be taken into consideration in the scoring evaluation for this criteria. So we're, we're, we do have the opportunity to look at that and consider that in the evaluation criteria.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. I appreciate that. Comments before we ask for a motion?
I think, and we've obviously had a ton of discussion on this issue over months. I think where we've gotten to today is a good compromise on this in terms of where potentially there could be a dispensary. Again, there's going to be three potential, up to three. Doesn't mean that we'll actually approve three, and so I feel everyone to remember that. And we did narrow it down a little bit more, which I think with public input and discussion with the council, I think has put us in a spot where we have pretty good, let me give a pretty good map here. And I'm ready to put forward a motion to approve staff report on this.
Your motion would be to waive the second reading and adopt the ordinance?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Mr. Driscoll's not paying attention. I want to allow Councilmember Taylor an opportunity to comment before we, before we call for the vote.
Sure. So I'm a parent of a young child, and I care a lot about child safety. I really appreciate everyone's concerns on that from the community. I've gone through the ordinance with a fine-tooth comb and the application process, and I do feel satisfied that these businesses are going to be highly regulated, discreet, and secure. They're going to be required to have security on-site, 24-hour surveillance. The signage will be really discreet. And, you know, children walk past liquor stores on their way to school and smoke shops every day, and I, I don't believe that this is going to be worse than that, although I do really appreciate everyone's concern. So with that, I would second this.
Oh, very good. Thank you very much. I have a motion in a second. Let me just comment, and I wanted to echo what City Manager Morris mentioned, that the map itself doesn't necessarily represent much protection for the specifics to where a particular licensee may appear on that map. However, the permitting process, the review of the applicants, the licensing is extremely detailed, and the city manager and city staff will have multiple opportunities to address things like exposure to children walking to and from school, bus stops of any type, any other type of facility that may not be appropriate to be around a cannabis shop, those types of things. I think we've worked very hard to make sure that staff along the way has the ability just to stop those things dead in their tracks if it's not appropriate. And that serves as that the various folks that will come forward, whether it be one or three, to apply once this process is finished. So I would just say, I share the same concerns. You know, over the years, I've worked with Mr. Rivas and his planning staff to address some of the over-signage blight that we have, particularly with the mini-marts, it seems to be. You know, they're really not supposed to have every square inch of their windows covered with beer and cigarette and liquor advertisements, even though they do. And all of our kids are walking by that every day, so it's not appropriate. We do have some success, but it's an issue that exists out there right now, and it's not supposed to look that way. This industry will never look that way, because I think we've put the forethought into it so far. So with that, if there's no other comments, I will go ahead and ask the clerk to please call for, call the roll.
Mayor Acuna?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Motion carries. Thank you very much. We, I guess we should bring Councilmember Borelli back in, but I think we're sending her right back out again.
I don't think so.
The application, okay, very good. Well, could someone please bring Councilmember Borelli back in?
I thought the...
Thank you to those that attended this evening on this, on item 10.1. Still a couple more steps to go, but we're getting there. So while they're doing that, I will move over to 11.1. So, Mr. Driscoll, it's my understanding that there is not a problem with, with property owners?
Because the last matter was a problem in the result of a property in a potential overlay area.
Speak into your microphone, please.
Tenant, or you yourself could have a building that was going to be used for this. So, including that in the area could be perceived to have a financial effect, create a financial interest on that. This is simply the application process, and I really don't believe that there's that financial interest involved in that, unless the council person was intending on becoming an applicant.
I have no plans.
In that place, you know, the person might have an interest in the amount of the fees and that sort of thing.
Well, thank you, John. I appreciate that, Mr. Driscoll. And if the clerk will let the minutes note that we did discuss a potential conflict of interest with Councilmember Borelli on item 11.1, and have determined that there is none. So, apologize I didn't recuse you earlier, before I got rolling on the last one. So you're back. We'll go on to item 11.1, which is to adopt the resolution establishing the cannabis permit application fees and approving the application process. Mr. Morris?
Excuse me. Thank you, Mayor and Council. This item was on your last agenda, just as a draft, initial review of this process. Nothing really has changed since then, since what you reviewed at the last meeting, but just briefly, I'd like to go through, you have a copy of the application process. I want to note that not included with this is, will be the actual form that applicants will complete. We're still working on completing that, but there's, there's no requirement that you actually adopt the form that gives staff the authority to do that. So we will put that form together, but it will be based on this process and the fees that are outlined in this report. Just quickly, as you can see, the fees have been established. Total fee for, for an applicant that goes through the entire four-phase process will be $8,336. That's comparable to what we've seen in other agencies. Some are a little bit lower, some may be a little bit higher, but that's in that range of where, where they are at. As noted last time, with the four phases, you, an applicant who does not make it from phase one to phase two would not pay any additional fees, that's why it's broken up that way, to limit the amount of fees that an applicant may have to pay going forward. The only, the only other issue, a couple of issues I want to mention, previously in the application process, and actually still in this application process, it spells out that the start date for receiving applications would be February 4th. One complication I've noted in here that that gives us is the fact that the action you just took on item 10.1 to adopt the business overlay zone, adopted that ordinance, however, by law, that ordinance will not take effect 30, until 30 days from, from today when you adopted it. Therefore, any zoning verification letters that the planning department would issue would need to have a qualification on them, that they would be based on not having a challenge to that ordinance. So, as I've stated in my report, the cleanest way to do this would be to delay that opening of the filing period until after that is actual effective, that ordinance takes effect, which is approximately the 22nd of February. And therefore, I've suggested other dates that you can consider for this, which would mean to open that on February 25th and run through April 29th, which allows for about a nine-week period, similar to what was spelled out in the application that you saw and the one that is attached here tonight. So, I'm, staff is open to either, just wanted to emphasize that it's probably cleaner and makes more sense to delay till the opening on the 25th of this month. That's about, what, three weeks, I think we figured is what it would be. So it's not a long period of time. So I will leave that and seek council's direction on that item. And the other thing I wanted to note is, you know, the final piece that we have not adopted yet, and this is for council and the audience, is that we still have to adopt the license fees, there will be an annual license fee, and we will work with our consultant on those and have those ready to go, hopefully in the near future for you to, to look at. With that, I will be happy to answer any questions. I just want to emphasize that these costs are designed to cover staff and consultant cost of reviewing and approving any applications that, that we receive. So, with that, I will open up for any questions council might have that we can answer.
Thank you. Cleve, are there any questions for Mr. Morris on the information he's presented?
I don't have any.
Okay.
No.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Saragosa?
I do not.
All right, all right. Then I will go ahead and open this part of the meeting up to public comment. Anyone that wishes to address the council on item 11.1, please come up to the podium. And we do have a three-minute rule.
Kelly Chisano, representing Pure Life Collective. The only thing, the only question that I have, I think everything is spelled out really clearly, and I appreciate, Cleve, that you making that so clear, because there's definitely other application processes that I have looked at that are not so spelled out. They just give you the fee and no breakdown, so it is billing confidence and, you know, transparency on both sides. The question I have is, it's built on a six applicant SKU? If we get 10 applicants, is it going to be about the same amount of work? Because it's more people and parts moving to be checked, does it work out the same or down the opposite direction if we're down to three or two applicants? I imagine it's at least four, but how does that change that cost? And would that be re, have to be refigured at what point? Because applications will be turned in throughout that five weeks. And then it could, we could have 10, I mean, we don't know what we're going to see, and I just want to see if we're thinking about that. Thank you.
You're welcome. We'll go ahead and, we'll get the answer to that question once we've heard from any other member of the public. Cleve has got that written down. Thank you. Is there another member of the public wishing to address the council on this item? Seeing no one else approaching the podium, I'll ask if the ad hoc committee member present has any comments on the licensing. Yes, excuse me, on the permit. We're getting the license.
Just, hi, John Clarici, subcommittee member. Just briefly, I, I, hopefully the process, and it was laid out by City Manager Morris, give some solace to folks about what's going to happen in this whole deal. There's going to be a lot of moving parts. And the other thing too is, this thing ain't cheap, so that the folks that are going to be coming to you are pretty serious about this endeavor. One of, and this is a slightly off-topic, but not, I just found out from a friend of mine who actually tallies these things, in the last seven years, 100 businesses have gone out of business on Main Street in the historic part of Main Street. Most of them go out of business because they're under-capitalized, and there's a bunch of other reasons too. These people are not going to be under-capitalized, I guarantee you, and whatever fee we come up to have them renew their thing every year is going to be consequential. But the process is thorough, it is going to run them through the wringer, and I think that if there's a takeaway from all of this to the public, both people that are in favor of this and the people that are not in favor of this, should be, that it is going to be very thorough, we're going to check these folks out, and the three people, if there are in fact three, that get approved are going to, at least from, at the starting gate, have hit their marks and said their lines, and, and we can be fairly confident, at least from that perspective, we'll be getting good folks in these businesses. So anyway, that's it. Are there any questions? I was, I did participate in this, if you have any questions about this, it's fairly straightforward, the staff report is excellent, and it's fairly self-explanatory.
We do have a question, Mr. Borelli.
Wow. I asked, I don't even know if I can answer it.
Councilmember Borelli has a question.
You know, and I apologize if this has already been somehow pointed out and I've missed it, but what if you had 10 applicants and seven of them survive, I mean, they all passed? How are you going to, and, and we've set a limit of not more than three, and that hasn't been established, so how are you going to, is it going to be a lottery, or is it?
Well, presumably, we'll go through the ranking process, there's going to be a ranking process as you get these things, because there'll be the initial, you know, there'll be, I mean, boof. There was an initial sort of, you get an application, this is fairly clear of any time you have multiple applications for something, you know, you go through, and do they, do they, you know, do they meet the standard? Like, is their package complete? Did they give you all the information? Did they answer everything? Did they provide everything that you need to have in the application package? That may, of the 10 or so, the theoretical 10, that might get rid of two, right, or one or two or none right off the bat. And then you start them down through the process, and, and at the end of it, if you have, you know, if you have a number of solid applications, you'll be able to go back through the, the criteria and actually say, well, this one we think is better than this one. And it'll be, you know, I don't want to say it'll be subjective, because we want, we don't want to be that way, but you'll be ranking them and saying, yeah, we think this one meets more of the criteria that are laid out in all of the, the whys and therefores than these three, and, you know, I say "we" like I'm actually going to be part of this, but somebody will be part of this, that, you know, you guys will appoint, that will, that will take care of that. So, the process and the package and the ranking criteria and everything else should probably do a pretty good job of narrowing it down to the X number that you want to do. Three is the maximum, obviously, as was pointed out, it could be fewer than that.
Could be two.
Could be two, it could be three, it could be one.
Could be one.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, John.
Anyway, that's it. Anything else?
No, thank you, John. Appreciate your work on this all last year. All right, I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back to the council. Cleve, did you want to offer any further clarification on the, what if there are high numbers of applicants?
If there are high numbers, our costs will be covered. The one potential is if there's actually less than four applicants, because our costs are based on a minimum of four. I think we will have four. But if there were less than four, the, the main ones that'll take a hit to their costs will be HDL, a little bit to the city staff and our time, but it, it'll be reduced because there's less applicants too, so I don't think it'll be a big factor.
And then the issue of if there's a high number of qualified applications, how are we going to select?
Well, as I mentioned, you've seen the scoring system that is in here, and I think that will, you know, the, the best applicants, hopefully due to that process, will rise to the top. I will note, I'm not sure I want to note this, but the council authorizes, authorized the city manager to make that final decision, but that is always appealable to the city council if, if, you know, an applicant is not happy with what comes out of that, so.
Very good. Is there any other questions on the item? Any comments?
One comment, or, I guess, yeah, it's a question. So, assuming everything goes through in terms of the application, I mean, we're down the line already here, but they, they want to, there's a new, a new owner. How does that work if there's, if somebody wants to come in and, and buy the business in terms of the?
That's a good question.
Application, or the, the actual?
Right. There are provisions in the ordinance for transferring a license, but it requires quite a bit of detail they have to go through to do, almost like a new application to do that, but it is the potential for that to happen.
Highly valid.
Gotcha.
Good question, though.
Same thing, it's a high, so, so it's almost like the same thing over again.
Exactly. Yes.
Gotcha.
Yep.
So it's no, no chance for like a bait-and-switch type thing where you come in and then, next day, Philip Morris, you know, is the one that owns the, that owns it.
That's why things happen.
Patty, you have a question?
So that kind of brings up a question for me. Say that transfer were to happen, and you didn't approve of who they wanted to transfer to, they, I guess, would just hang in there until they found somebody who did meet the qualifications? And these new people that are wanting to buy, they'll have to go through the same vetting process with all the, the fees and, and everything like that?
Same thing, yeah.
Okay.
Good question. So any other, Councilmember Taylor, did you have any questions or comments?
No.
Okay, thank you. Is someone like to make a motion on this item?
I'd move to approve with the delayed started filing period.
With the filing period as recommended by the city manager?
Yeah.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Acuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Motion carries. And if I could just note, Cleve, the Cannabis Ad Hoc Committee should probably meet fairly soon to discuss the licensing fees, and Councilmember Taylor has volunteered to be the second elected person on that committee, and we are retaining John Clarici as our citizen member of that committee, so we can get together fairly soon and...
Yeah, as soon as we get the information from HDL, we'll bring them back to the committee to review, so, should be in the near future, yeah.
And I appreciate the participation on the ad hoc committee. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to the next item, which is item 12, Discussion and Action Items. 12.1, the review status report on county homeless programs and direct staff on the next steps. Mr. Morris, can we have your staff report, please?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As you know, this has been an important topic for the city for quite some time now. The city has been working closely with the county. In fact, we have a city staff person and previously one of our councilmembers who, as you know, served on Opportunity Knox, which is part of the county committee that is putting, reviewing this and working on the grants and et cetera. Excuse me. The county provided us some information with, that they have been working on, and as has been mentioned previously, they applied for grants, they qualified and applied for grants to receive funding to help in the area of homelessness. They basically applied for two grants. One is the California Emergency Solutions and Housing Grant Program, and the other is the Homeless Emergency Aid Program. And you have details on those. The most important document, I think, of these that I provide is the attachment number three to the staff report, which is an email, or not an email, but a memorandum to the Board of Supervisors from Daniel Delmone, who is Deputy Director of Health and Human Services for the county. And he has been their main contact and staff to the Opportunity Knox Program Committee. So I wanted to just briefly bring your attention to these and talk about what the funding is going to go to. They did receive both of these grants. The Emergency Shelter and Housing Grant, excuse me, Emergency Solutions and Housing Grant, they received $473,000. And the priorities for that is, number one, going to be the, the point-in-time count, and that'll be taking place this year. In fact, I think it's going on either this month or next month, I didn't get that exact date, but the point-in-time count will be going on, and that is a requirement in order to continue to receive funding on both the federal and state level. So it's an important part of what they do, and you'll know that they have $121,000 set aside for the point-in-time counts for 2019 and 2021. The second item is coordinated entry staffing, and you can read through this program basically what this, this will do. The coordinated entry staffing is there to better put the resources together and help those people in need to find the proper help and resource that they need to get out of homelessness. And so, they have set aside $250,000 that will provide additional staffing, and I want to note that this isn't necessarily, in fact, does not appear that it's going to be county employees, this will be consultants who assist them with this process that they will be contracting with to, to provide that service. And the last area for this grant is a strategic plan. Again, I think it gets down to, we're getting this money and more money's starting to come in, but we need to have a, a more succinct and a defined plan of how we're going to spend the dollars. And so they propose $78,000 for a five-year homeless strategic plan that they will put together and, and be able to identify the most critical needs and how they can address those needs. The second grant program is the Homeless Emergency Aid Program, and again, in the memo on the last page, it shows where, how that funding would be spent. You can see that number one is $325,000 for transitional age youth homelessness. And that program would contract with, they proposed three... that program would contract with, they proposed three separate providers that would assist in identifying the needs of, of the youth that are experiencing homelessness. And so, that, that program, I think, is very important and will provide a, a great benefit to, to the county. The second item is programs that impact chronic homelessness. This program, as defined in here, is one that they would contract with, actually with the probation department for $200,000 to assist with transitional and permanent housing for, for those that are in that need, primarily those that the probation department, department works with. In addition to the housing, they would provide a supportive network to help them move into the traditional housing and, or transitional housing and then also into the permanent housing. And then the final part of this is one that I think is a need that's going to be more and more, and it's one that we've discussed many times and have not been able to come up with a solution for, or even if we wanted to do it, and that is the sheltering and purchase of property for, for sheltering. And they've set aside $850,000 for that purpose. My initial thought says, well, that's, that's a lot of money, $850,000, but when you start talking about buying properties and rehabbing properties for a very large number of people, $850,000 really is not a, a large sum of money. But hopefully, it is a good amount of, of seed money that, that can help move them forward. And I want to note with, with that piece, with the sheltering piece, they've noted in, in the report that, that will not be spent, apparently, until that strategic plan is completed and identifies exactly what type of sheltering program that we want to establish and have in place. So, the last part that I wanted to mention with this, you can read through these reports, you can see that they did get these grants and they will be moving forward with those. Previously, the city-county two-by-two committee discussed holding a joint meeting between the city council and the board of supervisors on this specific topic. Originally, we were going to do that in, in January or February, however, the recommendation of Don Ashton, the CIO, that we wait until after the point of count, point in time count is done, would be a better time to do that. We have some interesting data that we will have at that point that can serve as a discussion item and help us kind of focus where we're going with it. So, again, it is now looking at, that we would probably do that more like in March or April, once we have that report, but I wanted to confirm that with the city council that you are interested in having that joint meeting with them to discuss those issues. So, with that, I will take any other direction that the council may have on this and, or answer any questions. Thank you.
Very lengthy report, Mr. Morris. Is there any questions from the council or staff?
They don't have any questions, but I really would encourage us to have the joint meeting. I would like that.
I agree with that.
No questions?
No questions.
Okay, thank you. Michael?
In terms of the, the sheltering, the $850,000 with the shelter, I know they're going to wait until the, the report is completed, but do you have a sense of, I know we have sort of the ad hoc or loosely, sort of the faith-based beds that are out there right now, do we have any sense of how that's currently working or if those are even being utilized just as we get further into winter and it gets colder? Just wondering if, how that's going and how that plays into any of this, if, if at all?
I, I think that that could or may or may not be a part of the, the future sheltering plan for the county. I have not heard a report, I apologize, I do not have a report on how that has been going this, this year, the nomadic shelter that they've been running. It is running, as I understand it, but I have not received any reports on that yet this year, I can try and get some information for the county.
That would be great, just to see kind of what's, what's going on out there. I mean, I know I still see people, but I know as it gets colder, people are going to be searching for
Sure.
For places to go.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, I'm going to go ahead and open this up to the public and invite any member of the public that would like to comment, excuse me, on item 12.1. Please come forward, if you wouldn't mind stating your name for the record, and we will have a three-minute
Hi, my name is Paul Codelja. I work with a nomadic shelter and I can give you some information. We currently have four churches opening their doors on Friday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and Monday. We're averaging about 20 to 30 guests per evening. I don't know what else you would like to know that I could
How many guests, or how many?
About 20 to 30 per evening.
20, 30 per night?
Yeah.
And did you have any comments on the information that our staff has presented to us this evening on the funding the county has received?
You know, I missed most of that reporting. I just walked in about five, five minutes ago.
Okay, it is, it is a rather lengthy
Yeah.
Description of what the county has been awarded from the state.
Okay.
About $1.8 million total.
Try to get a copy of that report somewhere.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you for the update on the nomadic shelter, appreciate that. Is there anyone else wishing to comment on this item?
You're taller than me. Sue Rodman, resident of Placerville, and I've watched this one unfold for several years, and I'd like, these are my comments about this, I read this whole lengthy thing, all three pieces, and I'd like to clarify that Homeless Emergency Aid Program is what the acronym HEAP is supposed to mean. $72,000 for administration, $325,000 for homeless youth set aside, that's probably the highlight, $200,000 for the probation department, and $850,000 for sheltering, purchase of property, and rehab. Anybody who's bought a house in this county lately knows that $850,000 won't buy you more than two houses, if that. Then we go to the, so the total amount available is 1.448 million. Not too bad a start, but then you have California Emergency Solutions and Housing, the CESH Program for El Dorado County, COC, the Continuum of Care, is what the COC acronym is supposed to stand for, to fund activities which assist persons experiencing or at risk of homelessness, unquote. $365,981 for system support, whatever that is, $85,000 to develop a plan to address actions within the service area, and $23,000, $23,736 administration costs. So, the total award is $474,717, and the real total for both HEAP and CESH is $1,922,717, with $96,136 going purely to administration costs, overhead. In all the rest of this almost $2 million that I could see, I don't see $1 as direct help for the homeless. It will count people, it will make plans, it will do system support, and to me, this is more than disappointing, it's disgusting. Hear this sound in your ears, it's the bullshit bill. Hangtown Haven provided orders of magnitude more real help to living, breathing homeless people in its almost two years than anything that has been done since. In Hangtown Haven, homeless people had shelter, and best of all, they had hope. They established a little community with rules, with people supporting each other, with a location for community services to reach out to them. There was an actual continuum of care, more than just a COC acronym. Right here in this room, we heard gratitude, we heard success stories, we heard problems, there were problems, of course, there were problems. Whenever you try anything out of the box, there will be problems, but there was also progress, which I haven't seen since. And it was more than paper generation. It was a real homeless emergency aid program, not just an acronym and not just a piece of paper. Sometimes, the inexpensive, obvious, and simple solutions are the ones that actually work. It's too bad there's nothing that creative in all this pile of bureaucratic paper.
Thank you for your comments, Sue. Does any other member of the public wish to address the council on this item? Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Maureen Dion Perry, and I'm here because I'm very concerned about the homeless in our community. Mayor Acuna, you may recall or not, we met for, we had a meeting at the Smelters Sandwich Shop last year when we had a discussion of the homeless as well as the historical bridge with Marion Washburn. I work with the Upper Room to raise funds through the Empty Bowls fundraiser program. I'm also actively working with El Dorado Progressives. And last but not least, I spent, along with two other women in this community, many, many months working with a homeless woman in our community who had serious medical needs and shelter needs, and it was an amazing experience to really try to put everything we had to trying to get this woman the medical care she needed and some shelter. We never found anything here in El Dorado County. The availability of room and board, of board and care facilities around here is non-existent. We had to go down the hill, Fair Oaks, Elk Grove, there were numerous facilities down there that, that were actually reasonably priced and in very nice neighborhoods and were businesses. So, I really feel like there's two issues that I would agree with Sue, that it's very discouraging to see that we only have four nights of the nomadic shelter available through the winter right now. So, that's three nights a week where people are out in the elements in the cold, and this, to me, is an emergency situation, whether it's a fire or, you know, we shelter people in times when they do not have shelter after a fire or an emergency of that sort. This is an emergency. To have people in our community outside through the weather we've been having right now, I think is really, does not speak very good of our community. And I don't see anything, these are long-range plans, it's wonderful that you got this money, that we will have $1.89 million to do some planning, but we have some immediate needs that need to get addressed here, and I don't see anything of that $1.8 million, as Sue said, addressing these immediate needs. So, I would really encourage you to relook at that and come up with some emergency, true emergency plans. The word emergency does not mean plan for years in order to address, quote, "emergency needs" that we have now in our community. So, I would really ask you, how are we going to address these emergency needs through this first $1.9 million that we have? And to immediately have the meeting with the board of supervisors and bring this forward because we need, so we have 600, 500, 700, I'm not sure why that makes a big deal difference in terms of moving ahead with a joint meeting as soon as possible to really bring this discussion forward with the board of supervisors and also ask you and the staff to really address this emergency issue that we have facing us. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to address the council? Seeing no one else, well, we actually have a one-time speaking.
Just once, can't add another comment.
But since you came up the first time to address the nomadic shelter, why don't you go ahead and give us one more comment?
I mentioned that we average 20 to 30 guests per night, but based on history, in the coming months, January, well, February, and March, and April, that usually increases to 40 to 60 per night because of the weather. And also, I don't know if you're aware that there are two homeless women who passed away on the streets of Placerville last month, December. Their names are Annette Franco and Paula Camerata. Thank you.
Thank you for that additional information. All right, now I'll go ahead and close public comment on this item, bring it back to the council for directions to staff. I guess it would be, this as an information item for everybody, this isn't money that the city of Placerville has received. The city of Placerville, Cleve, and correct me if I stray wrong here, but the city isn't eligible to receive any of these funds. This is a county-only function. The counties in the state of California are allowed to go out for various emergency assistance funding. We don't have a health department, the county provides that function for us. So, we are frequently beside ourselves as we try and deal with the homeless community in, in, in Placerville, in and around Placerville. This, I believe, is the first time that the county has successfully gone after the state fund of these various programs?
They, they did get a small amount, I believe, last year, around $300,000, as I recall right, but this is the first time they've got a large amount like this, and I just wanted to state that the, the larger cities may have their own continuum of care, that is an option, but again, the funding would be, be based on their size and et cetera. It doesn't make sense for the city of Placerville to try and do that on our own, the funding would probably not be sufficient to meet what we would want to do. Makes more sense for us to work with, with the county. Don't completely disagree with the speakers. Unfortunately, I know that Ms. Rodman is well aware that unfortunately, federal programs and state programs always have strings attached that are very, when you talk about bureaucracy, they, they wrote the book on it. And unfortunately, we have to, we have to meet certain conditions even to get the funding. For example, the, the point in time count is a strict requirement. If you don't have that, don't ask for funding. And so, all of that takes work to administer, et cetera. I, I would rather say, why do we need the money for administrat, we don't get any of that administration money, by the way, that goes all, all to the county to administer contracts and, you know, do the work necessary to, to get that going, so. But, yeah, the, you know, I, I believe, I was not involved in this grant writing process, but I do believe in the discussions I've had with the people that did, that unfortunately, to a certain extent, your, your hands are tied in what you can and can't do with the money. If I had my way, I would say, give us $2 million, let us decide how, where it can be best be spent, but as we all know, those restrictions that are on those funds usually don't allow you to do that, so.
Cleve, how long have these grant programs been available to cities and counties? Do you have a rough idea?
I, I do not know that. I do know that there's a significant amount of additional funding that has been provided in the last year for this, both at the state and federal level due to the homeless issues, but, so, these, that's the reason why you're seeing, what I see as larger dollar amounts is due to the fact that there's been additional funding put into that on, by the government.
Thank you. Michael, did you have any comments?
That was, yeah, I think Cleve actually answered my, which was, is, are any of these funds fungible in terms of, you know, for emergency sheltering or anything like that? Doesn't sound like
There, there is some that is available for sheltering, that would be up to us working with the county and see if, you know, it may be possible that they want to use that for, the $850,000, for example, as I understand it, could be used for sheltering, even possibly emergency sheltering, but I'm not, I'm not positive about that, but I believe it could be, so.
I think, I think there's something to be said about trying to get more people in the beds now. I mean, I, we all know about the ladies that passed away that were homeless this past, past month, that, it was brought up earlier today, or this evening. I wouldn't mind pursuing that and seeing if there wasn't, I'm not saying use all $150,000 I wouldn't mind pursuing that and seeing if there wasn't, I'm not saying use all 150,000. We do have to plan, we have to plan, and it's not cheap to buy something going forward to make sure we have sort of, in perpetuity, a place for people to go, if that's where we're going to go with this thing. But, you know, when it gets 30 degrees, 20 degrees at night, people need a place to go. I would be supportive of looking at ways to, whether it's going through our nomadics to see if we can't help supplement their efforts, maybe even if it's just one X per day, but at least try to do something else. I hate to think that we're sitting on money that could be used, even if I know down the road that we have to do more. There is more money in the state budget. We all know, as Cleve mentioned, that that money is handcuffed. There are expectations and things that we have to do in order to qualify it and order to continue to get that money. I do know the legislature, this is a huge priority, the Big 11 mayors that all have their own sort of continuum of care programs have put a huge emphasis on this because obviously they have a much greater share of the homeless population in their cities. I see it every day, I work in downtown Sacramento. It's not uncommon for me to, if I get to my office at 7:00 in the morning, to have to, you know, get around somebody that's sleeping in our, in front of our doorway. So it's, you know, clear and present. So I'm not sure how the rest of the council feels, but I, certainly we have to work with the supervisors on this as well, but I'd be willing to at least look at what else we can do.
Well, I agree with the speakers that, you know, getting money for surveys and for administration and staff is great, and that's all good, but it doesn't do anything really right now. And even that 850,000 for sheltering isn't, did I understand correctly, that it's not available until after the strategic plan? So it wouldn't be for this winter?
I believe that it, no, it wouldn't be for this winter. I believe that it could be, I think it is available now, but they want to hold it to use it for what may be identified in the strategic plan for a permanent solution to sheltering, so.
So what options, forgive me, because I'm kind of new to this, but what options do the, does the city have right now? Do we need to set up a committee to, you know, bring resources together? I know that we're going into a budget cycle, so we can look at allocating resources to this problem, but again, it wouldn't be for this winter.
I think in terms of what you, if you want to consider something for immediate this winter, what I would suggest is that we meet, and perhaps you could assign your two-by-two committee, we'll be meeting with two of members of the Board of Supervisors and a CIO, and that, I think we have a meeting scheduled for early February, like February 4th, so fairly soon, to talk about that and emphasize our concern that, you know, could something in terms of emergency sheltering be done immediately? I do want to note also that you mentioned the temperatures. There is a policy that is in place when the temperatures get to a certain level, that warming centers are established in the county. I will say that last winter, we did not reach those temperatures.
Fairly low, isn't it, it's like 20s?
Well, it has to, it's, I want to say 30 or 32 degrees, but it has to stay at that temperature during the day, not just at night.
Right, not just at night. And where are those warming centers located, and how do people, you know, from downtown Placerville with no cars get them?
Yeah, the county identifies them, my staff person is not here anymore, but they are like, I believe, I believe the fairgrounds is one site.
It is.
This facility, Town Hall, is a potential site. So there are sites like that throughout the county that have been identified, and that information goes out in every way that we can when that happens.
And what would it take to maybe get the temperatures adjusted so that, you know, it's more realistic to us being experienced?
That is a policy of the Office of Emergency Services at the county, and it's traditional for others. So my advice would be to work with them, to say, hey, we want to, we want to look at adjusting that. Otherwise, we would be on our own doing something and paying for the cost of trying to establishing those warming centers.
And you don't get reimbursements from OES.
Patty?
Can you answer this? Don't we have requirements that if we open a facility, that we have to provide, for instance, like, my understanding is that we have to have, just in case there's a medical emergency, that we have to establish a person that is qualified to take care of a, you know, situation?
It depends on what you're talking about. If you're talking about a declared emergency where we open a warming center, in that case, the county arranges for staffing, usually through Red Cross and other people like that that are already trained in how to handle those situations.
But if we did it on a regular basis.
If you're outside that, we did it on our own, we would be, we would have to take all of those issues into account and how we would handle those situations.
Because I remember one time we were talking about this earlier on, and the price just kept, and Sue, I apologize, but the price kept going up and up and up for what we had to provide, and it wasn't going to work.
Yeah, because it's 24, it's all night long, so you have to have a police officer, I believe, you have to have a staff member present that knows how to respond to a medical emergency.
You've got to have mental health services.
Yes.
And these are all regulations that are dictated to us. Cleve, I remember from a couple of winters, Patty, did you have anything else?
No, that's.
Okay, thank you. Cleve and I have been at this a while. Seems to me that actually the National Weather Service has a key to some of this, too. It seems to me they declare a cold warning or freeze. There's a number of things that trigger, the state's response, OES is getting involved, then it kicks down to the counties.
I can't say this for sure, but I would guess that county OES standards for opening warming centers coincide with the state's standards. So our ability to recommend that those be changed may also be limited because of that. And I'm not saying that we can't establish our own and declare our own emergency, however, there are other provisions to where, whether or not we may get reimbursed for costs if we were to do that on our own, so.
I think that's been an issue in the past, that we would be, we would be having to take those dollars ourselves. This is a global issue, that the city of Placerville is probably not going to be the location where the solution to this is going to be found. We're going to be a player in this, and we're going to have to do our part as a community to help those people that want to be helped and provide whatever services we can afford to provide. This isn't continuing to get worse, and, I mean, discussions could be, go on for many weeks probably, as to how we arrived where we are today as a society, as a world. Homelessness is not unique to El Dorado County, I mean, everybody knows that. Except that, you know, the question comes up time and again, how a small city of 11, almost 11,000 people is going to help do its part globally to address this issue? There are no simple solutions to this. The way I kind of see this is, this is, this is the county's money. They have just as many homeless issues and problems, they have more than we have. So to think that we're going to get any substantial chunk of this 1.9 million, thanks for adding it up, Sue, it's a lot of money, and it has a lot of strings attached to it, so there's going to be a slow pass-through on it. You know, we're going to have to fight hard to address issues that really impact our citizens, that impact our staff, and impact our police department on a daily basis with, if you want to call them homeless, vagrants, transients, I was using transients for a while. The folks that have the biggest impact, I think, with my park staff and the police department, would never go to one of these shelters. They won't give up their drugs and alcohol, they won't give up their self-rule, this is their lifestyle. We're still going to see them. They're still going to be walking up and down the sidewalk, which is their civil right to do in any number of chosen lifestyles. They're going to be homeless, because that's what they want. So those folks, that is another very deep discussion to be had. I would like to think that as a community, a true homeless family of, you know, a mother with children, or a family that's just about to get kicked out of their home, I would hope that we could find resources to help those folks, I mean, that really, truly don't want to be homeless, that don't want to be a part of that camp-out society that, I can share with you that the camps in Placerville cost this city well over $75,000 a year to clean up, as unbudgeted money that comes from other departments and other functions that we have to detour to clean up the various campsites that are on city and private property. Again, it's an ongoing issue. I guess we could meet with the supervisors sooner rather than later to get a feel for what they're going to want to do. Given the magnitude of the issues that they face, I think we might as well kind of have that reality meeting sooner rather than later, to know that a lot of this is going to go towards their areas, and I totally get that. So, Cleve, what?
I think the suggestion that City Manager Morris had in terms of maybe having this as a two-by-two issue on a more immediate basis, and then maybe having this meeting after the point-in-time count comes, but concurrently using two-by-two in order to move really on a more of a, I don't know if I would use the word "emergency," but certainly on an expedited path to see what we can do now for folks through that platform. I'm not sure if I just put up a motion there or not, but I think that's.
This is a direct staff, Cleve, we don't need a motion on this today.
You don't need a motion, yeah, if that's the contents of council to have us work in that manner, we can do that.
Chief Portega, would you have any comments that you could add to this discussion?
You are very familiar with this, both sides of this community, those that are successful, that we do get help for, and those members that choose homelessness as a lifestyle.
So, yeah, our staff has identified a number of chronic homeless folks that have been here for a couple of years. There are a number of them that, no matter what we do, no matter what our efforts, no matter how many shelter beds are available, they're not going to conform. The other half of it is that, quite honestly, we have helped a good number of people get off the streets into transitional housing or get into public guardianship. We don't talk about it in public forums, because it's people's privacy, and I'm not going to get into that. So those that want help, we do assist them, but we are very limited, because the county is the one, as you have all pointed out, that gets the funding for this. So we do work closely with private and public agencies, many of the churches, we always know where the nomad shelters are, every night, our patrol officers know, and we'll even drive them there, we'll drive them to the points where they'll be picked up. And I concur with you that the 75,000 that you mentioned, Mr. Mayor, is just the amount that the contractor charges us to clean it up. It doesn't cloud, does not include all of the staff time that we spend as well. So, and yes, there is no easy solution to this, it's a mental health crisis, more than a homeless crisis. A lot of these folks are in some form of personal crisis, and those are the ones that we can help, if they're veterans, or if they have a family member in town that's willing to assist. We're very hard to show some compassion and some help to these folks, because some of them do need the help. Like I said, there's a hardcore group of maybe five or six that don't want to see us at all, and they're going to continue their lifestyle, if that answers your question.
It does, and I would like you to share for just a minute, I know your sergeants and your command staff have regularly assigned or under-signed duties that they take on. If you could maybe share a little of what they do, tracking and helping.
At least once a week, a sergeant and an officer go out and contact these folks in camps and try to work to determine, are these folks that we can help? And again, there are many of them that we can help and get them into whatever services they need. Others will make phone calls, will do a lot to try to connect these folks and get them off the street. Those that are under the influence or causing a public nuisance or doing other things, not just on Main Street, any other parts of the city, including around the schools, other parts of Upper Broadway, they go to jail. It's that simple. We have compassion to a point. If they don't want to take the help that we try to offer them, then there are consequences. So, does that answer your question, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, it does, and I appreciate you sharing that information. When you weren't looking, I've had the opportunity to talk with your sergeants, and they do take this to heart, and, because that's, I mean, they're on our streets every day or every night, that's their job. And they do know these individuals, and they do take great pride in being able to help and solve and provide solutions when possible. And stern guidance is needed, they're also available to do that. So I appreciate you instilling and encouraging that in our force, because there are 24-hour eyes and ears out there. So that is greatly appreciated, and I think it deserves recognition, because frequently you guys are overlooked. So with that, Cleve, do you have a sense of where the council would like to go with this? And I appreciate everybody's genuine concern over this, this is very, very frustrating. This is, again, as I said before, it's a global issue, and we've got to all just do what we can to make sure we're doing our part on it, but we're not going to be able to solve this on, you know, there's no one magic moment that we're going to have, but we will keep working on this. So we'll let the two-by-two meet and see what the supervisors and the CIO have to say about how they envision this 1.9 million dollars, and I'll bring that back. All right, thank you very much all for your comments.
One real quick follow-up. I think, from what the chief has shared with us tonight, I think it's pretty clear that we really don't allow people to freeze to death on the sidewalks.
No.
And I think that's really important, that people understand that.
Yes, it is. Thank you. Thank you for bringing that up again, because again, they're just out there doing what they're, that's their job, so. All right, we'll then move on to item 12.2, which is another exciting installment of the You Built the Broadway Sidewalk Project. Council is being asked to adopt a approval resolution to amend some contracts and to issue another notice to proceed, number two, with REY engineers, in an amount not to exceed $29,222 for the Broadway Sidewalk Project. City Engineer Eve, good evening, how are you?
Good evening, Mayor Acuna and council members. The proposed item before you approves at no-cost amendment, number one, and grants permission to staff to issue the notice to proceed, number two, with REY engineers for the Broadway sidewalks project. You may recall that this project will improve sidewalk connectivity within Broadway by creating continuous path of travel for pedestrians from Mosquito Road to Chanel School Road. The city applied for and successfully received Highway Safety Improvement Program funding for environmental clearance, design, and construction of the project. HCP funding provides 90% of this project's funding. In May of 2018, council approved a consultant services agreement with REY in the total amount of $119,844 for environmental review and design services for the said project, with a limited notice to proceed, number one, in the amount of $59,630. In December of 2018, the project was found to be categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, pursuant to sections 15301 and 15303 of the SEQA guidelines. Amendment number one addresses additional technical studies that have been requested by Caltrans on the preliminary environmental study PES form through the NIPA Environmental Policy Act, which is the federal environmental clearance process. To keep the project moving forward on its timeline, this amendment shifts the costs for this additional work from Phase Two to Phase One, as shown in the table in staff's report, along with staff's recommended actions. The project funding source lends itself into an aggressive delivery timeline. The milestone schedule for this project shows design being finalized in May of 2019, bidding in July, August of 2019, and construction starting in September of 2019, with a concluding in November of this year. As these milestones approach, staff will be commencing with public outreach to the community, especially to the impacted parcels and businesses within the project limits. That concludes staff's report, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Rebecca, I appreciate it. Does this council have any questions for City Engineer? Seeing no questions, is there any member of the public that wishes to address the council on this item, 12.2, our Broadway Sidewalk Project? I tease our city engineer, but this hasn't been one that's been going along in fits and sparts for quite a little while now, and we're getting there. Sue?
Yeah.
Oh, come on.
Sue Rodman, Placerville, just congratulations to Rebecca. If it weren't for her hanging in there with these guys, I'm not sure we'd ever get it done, but she has the teeth and, teeth and claws to get things done, so it's good.
Thank you, Sue. I appreciate your work on the Measure H and L committees. And this is going to be a very nice project, very happy to hear that you're going to get it done just before Apple Hill and Christmas tree season.
Almost, yeah.
Yes, sure you will.
Construction actually starts right during.
The rain will hold off until you get the last pavement down. This will. This will fix a lot of really missing sidewalk sections on Broadway. For anybody who's watching at home at this point, it starts at Mosquito Road and goes, this section goes east to Chanel School and just fixes a lot of stuff. So, you will know upon completion of this later this fall, you will feel very comfortable walking down Broadway where right now you have some spots where you can literally fall off. So, if there are no other questions or there's no comments from the public on this, Sue, thank you for your comment. I'll bring it back to the council for action.
Move for the adoption of the resolution.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Taylor. Moved by Councilmember Borelli. Roll call, please.
Mayor Acuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. Congratulations, Rebecca. We're going to get it. And then moves on to another exciting public works project this evening, and that is item 12.3, adopt a resolution ratifying some construction change orders on the Western Placerville Interchange Phase Two project.
Thank you.
Good evening again.
Good evening. The proposed item before you ratifies construction contract change orders 5 through 16, 20, 21, 25, and approves CCO 27 for the Western Placerville Interchange Phase Two construction contract. As you know, this project proposes to improve traffic operations and safety by constructing a new US-50 off-ramp at Ray Loder Drive and 150 space park and ride facility, pedestrian and bicycle facilities, and roadway improvements to both Ray Loder Drive and Forni Road, including a new signalized intersection. Construction for this project began on February 2, 2018, and is commencing with an anticipated end construction this summer or earlier, weather permitting. The description of work for each change order is provided within staff's report with a cumulative credit and reduction to the total contract amount by $53,410.04. This is personally my favorite kind of item to approve. The progress to date, including tonight's recommended approval, is still well within the 200,000 aggregate amount under the city manager's authority for this contract as approved by council on January 9 of 2018. That concludes staff's report, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much, Rebecca. Are there questions from council?
No, this is a, I love this type as well, so.
Oh, these are good. I like the detail.
Yeah, I was just going to say, could you highlight change order 21?
Oh, I have that three times circled.
Which is the 185,000 back.
So, in my former life as a designer, there's those definitive moments where you get a standard or an idea implemented in a design, and there becomes a moment when you actually get into construction where if there's just a better solution that presents itself in the field and it makes more sense, you do it, and you don't hold sacred to that design and you actually move with the condition that you find in the field. This happened to be one of those situations. The standard for erosion control methodology works well on a flat slope. Anybody who's driven by this site knows we don't have many of those. So, in terms of the methodology, we came up with a creative solution, not only with our biologists, but also with our designer, our construction management team, and the contractor, and came up with a solution that lended itself to a credit in the amount of And that right there actually included one item in particular that has kind of been, you know, one of those looks across the freeway and you just go, hmm. I think of Councilmember Borelli when it comes to those barren slopes left over from Phase One A. And so, part of this change order credit actually included trying to get some additional planting over there. Sorry for the delay, ma'am.
It's okay. It's okay, as long as we finally get some, something planted over there.
Yes, we're doing our best.
Thank you.
So, so, Veer Camp came up with a solution to not only, you know, assisted with us coming up with the solution to not only find that credit, but then, you know, they, you know, I asked them to take care of that because it's within the project footprint. We do have some work on that side of the freeway as part of this job, too. Minor work, but.
That's good news.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff? Is there any member of the public that wishes to address the council on this item?
Sue Rodman, I do love it when the old saying was sacred cows make the best hamburger. And when you hit a sacred cow and it doesn't work, and you turn it into hamburger and make things work, it's wonderful. So, I'm glad we have a creative city engineer and that we have a great contractor to work on this, who understands the local stuff and has stabilized half of Highway 50 besides. He knows what he's doing, and Rebecca knows what she's doing, and we get a good product.
Thank you. Thank you, Sue. Any other member of the public wish to address the council on item 12.3? Seeing no one else approaching the podium, closed public comment, and again, bring it back to council. I really liked change order 21 also, and the fact that we actually, and this will make Councilmember Borelli even happier because it's a better mix of seeds even. So, we didn't just save money, we actually went out and found the right stuff that hopefully will have a good sprouting effect out there, if we get nice rains and not mean rains. All right, would the council like to take an action on this item?
I'd move to adopt the resolution.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Taylor and seconded by Councilmember Borelli. Roll call, vote, please.
Mayor Acuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Motion carries. Thank you very much, Rebecca. Oh, this chief has been waiting for item 12.4.
We've all been waiting.
And I was trying to find a little patrol car to put apparently, turn it on tonight. Item 12.4, adopt a resolution approving the purchase of three 2019 Dodge Charger patrol vehicles from Elk Grove Dodge, and approve a purchase of emergency and safety equipment and authorize the chief and his designee to execute any documents for said purchase. Chief Ortega?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is an easy one. We need cars. We've needed cars for a few years. As you approved in November the purchase of some vehicles, right after you did that, we came upon some vehicles that became immediately available because we were going to have to order them, wait six or eight months. So, we jumped on this, and through some creative financing with Director Warren, we were able to get these cars that, we'll be able to take delivery of these to Robinson's Automotive this week and get them outfitted and maybe get them in the street within about two weeks. So, that does a couple of things. It saves us some money that we're not buying the 2020 models, which is what's available, going to be available for order, and it replaces the old Crown Victorias that were, one of them was put into service when I had black hair. So, we'll get that taken care of. And if you have questions on the financing, I may defer to Director Dave Warren as to how this goes about because it did involve a lease to purchase, which is appreciated and that you approved that a couple, last month, two months ago. I'll answer any questions if you have any on the cars themselves.
Thank you, chief. Does the council have any questions regarding the purchase of our three new patrol cars? All right. Mr. Warren, would you like to add any words?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just like to emphasize that the financing, we did receive a proposal from Opus Bank, and we're going to bring that to you at your next meeting for approval of that agreement. So, the financing, we have a preliminary approval, but until that agreement's in place, this financing is not formalized. It's not final.
But that won't delay the delivery of these cars?
No, it will not.
Okay. And does that include other vehicles, the Opus Bank proposal?
It does. It includes, the original proposal includes two parked vehicles. I think that's it as far as additional vehicles.
Okay, great. Well, we look forward to seeing that.
Actually, I take it back. There is three public works vehicles.
Yeah, I was going to say, there's a couple of pretty tired warriors out there in the public works department.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate you working with the chief to get this. I'll open this up to the public and ask any member of the public wishes to comment on item 12.4. We really should get you your own microphone.
Know why she doesn't take that seat right there?
Well, no, she has every right to sit, but we should get her-
Sue Rodman, one more time. I'd like to congratulate the chief for being able to, and his staff for being able to get out there and find these vehicles.
Yep.
And realize that the old Crown Vics, when they get to age 10, Ford has a policy that they do not make any replacement parts for a car after 10 years old. At 10 years old, you might as well retire it because you can't get any parts. So, and hopefully Dodge doesn't do the same thing, so we'll have NCIS LA vehicles out there. And I'm very proud that we could finance the safety equipment, all the auxiliary equipment ourselves, instead of having to put that on our charge card, too. Someday, I would like to see, really like to see this city get to the point where we are replacing things as they were out. So, instead of buying three cars in a year, we buy one every year, and we buy one truck every year, instead of having $100,000 of our money going to finance charges for putting these things on a lease-to-own basis. So, that's my, but good job for this one.
Thank you, Sue. How much did she pay you to say that?
I didn't pay her a dime. She did come up to ask me some questions.
Oh, thank you. And Sue's absolutely right. I'm looking forward to that day, too, Sue. I might be sitting out in the audience when we're actually getting things replaced in a timely, as they actually were out. If there's no other public comment, I'll bring this item back to the council for action. And thank you to Commander Ren for his car purchasing skills and finding these down at Elk Grove Dodge. Is there a motion on the item?
I move to adopt the resolution.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Saragosa and seconded by Councilmember Borelli. Roll call, please.
Mayor Acuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Motion is adopted. Thank you, chief. Thank you, Dave Warren, for writing the check.
He hasn't written it yet.
Well, I know. That's just I'm trying to butter him up. All right, moving on to item 12.5. I get to introduce my own item. I would like to thank the city clerk for her help in preparing this year's council members' appointments and assignments to our various committees and commissions. This year was challenging. We had an election, as well as we had a new council member appointee come in to take Councilmember Wilkins' place, who wasn't serving on any commissions or committees at the, last year. And so, we had to do some shuffling around, and I appreciate everybody's genuine interest and passion towards serving in all these different committees. And the city clerk was also kind enough to include a little paragraph that notes that we are going to have the cannabis ad hoc committee continue, and I would see that going through the end of this year. And as I mentioned earlier, Councilmember Taylor has agreed to be the second elected, and we're going to keep Citizen Clarici on there, just because of his expertise and all the work he did last year on it. Are there any questions on this? Let us see, this is just an acknowledge and file. I would like to thank Councilmember Borelli for staying on the Transportation Commission because she is going to be tasked with two new members there. It's a very important and can be at times complicated process dealing with the federal and the state programs. Very important cooperative atmosphere exists there between the city and the county, and the staff at Transportation Commission are just wonderful, provide a lot of services for large and small projects throughout the city as well as the county, and I look forward to her working with the two new members there and getting them up to speed and continued success at the Transportation Commission. I found out in speaking with Director Mindy Jackson over at Transit that Councilmember Borelli has served over 11 years on the Transit Board.
Twelve.
Twelve, yeah. So, that is a lot of service, so that shall be duly recognized sometime in the future. There's any questions on that? And thank you. We're just receiving file. And Regina, again, thank you for your help on this. So, that concludes the heavy lifting portion of this evening. Councilmember reports other agencies. I don't think anybody's met yet. I know WAFCO meets tomorrow night. Secog?
Yeah, so I was able to attend the Secog meeting, kind of snuck out in between trainings at the League of Cities. It was at the same time, but luckily it's just right next door, so I was able just to go across the street. So, just briefly, they did, they had a re, the new chair is David Sander from Rancho Cordova will be the chair for Secog in 2019. Jay Shear was the former chair. They also gave presentation, kind of an updated presentation on the MTPSCS, which is Metropolitan Transportation Plan Sustainable Communities Strategy, which is a 19% greenhouse gas target that everyone will have to meet, and some pretty interesting numbers in there in terms of attainments that everybody will eventually go through. And what that will look like at the end is still, still to be seen. And then, of course, they went through their priorities, and I won't go through all of them, but certainly transportation, GHD, and then, of course, our civic labs are all part of that, part of the Secog priorities. So, again, looking forward to serving on that board and representing the city, and then on, same thing on transportation. And Patty, just like kick me under the table if I'm like going off the rails or something at transportation.
We have a wonderful director. The whole, and the staff there is just absolutely, you know, we're kind of there, but they're the heavy lifters.
Perfect. And thank you.
I think that you will probably hear from transportation staff from-
In fact, I think I got an email in my inbox this afternoon, so I have to respond to that. So, yes, they're setting up that initial briefing.
Excellent. Excellent. And Councilmember Taylor, you should expect something from the Transit District. The director is on vacation this week, but I'm sure you'll hear from her early next week. Looking forward to having you on the board over at Transit District. All right, if there are no other reports, we'll move on to item 14, which is request for future agenda items. Are there any council member requests for future agenda items?
I just wanted to verify, are we having the, we are having the fire workshop next Tuesday, correct?
Good question. Kareem?
And then I'm assuming that the vegetation ordinance will be back on the agenda in the new feature.
Correct. It will be, what we're going to do is, yes, the workshop is occurring next Tuesday. I want to emphasize, you're not required to be there at all, actually, or the whole time. It's just an open house that people can come and go as they want to, but we welcome you. We're not advertising it as a noticed council meeting for that purpose, but you can come and go as you deserve.
Would you kind of explain to the public what we're going to, I mean, you're going to have stations, and it's not, it's not a speaker?
Right, right. It will, we were, we'll be providing information on various topics. We have currently scheduled the Eldorado County Fire District, the Fire Safe Council, hopefully Cal Fire, I think I've got them tied down, to attend. We also have, from the UC Davis Extension, will be, we were put in touch with them. They will be talking to us about plants that you can put around your home, that you can plant, that are fire retardant, fire resistant, I guess, plants. And the police department will be there, and we will have, plus City Hall, we will have a booth there. And what I want to do is kind of talk about those standards that we'll be looking at in the vegetation management ordinance, and that will allow people to comment on those and see what those are. So, that's kind of the format we'll be looking at, again, from 6 o'clock to 8 o'clock Tuesday the 29th, and so, we're looking forward to that.
You know, a lot of people are very concerned about insurance and this, and I know that, do you, I guess we don't want to get an insurance company there, but for folks that are saying, telling me that they can't get insurance, recommendations or tell, give them a, you know, pathway, maybe?
I think that one of the key things will be to define that legally required defensible space, if they can come and find out for sure what that is. I believe also that the Fire District, if you request, will come and look and tell you if you meet that defensible space requirement. So, that's, that's a key one to start with, make sure that you meet that.
Well, what I was getting at, though, is that there's a lot of companies have just said, no more.
Right, right.
And so, they're having to search for, you know, companies that will insure our area.
Sure. Yeah, I don't know that we would give out recommendations on that.
No, I don't mean a company. I mean, just, you know, where they can go to get that information or something.
I mean, just, you know, where they can go to get that information or something.
Yeah, yeah. I would probably recommend, maybe the State Department of Insurance could, is that the right term that I'm using?
Correct.
The, the, could probably help on that.
I think they do have like a, an ombudsman program there, too. Yeah, unfortunately, it's not like SCIF, like workers' comp, where they're like the last resort, so if nobody else will cover you, you can still get coverage through SCIF. There isn't such a thing for homeowners. So, to your point, council member, it would be good to have, maybe, might not be bad to look at DOI.
I even had a person tell me they just not, they don't have insurance anymore. And that's really sad and scary.
I'm seeing it on Facebook and Nextdoor app. I mean, people are, people are, people are worried, and it's happening.
And then, at the open house, will there be an opportunity for people from the public to submit their ideas? Because I know that, you know, a lot of people have a lot of different ideas that they'd like us to consider.
We can do that, yeah. We can put together some comment cards and stuff that they can submit. Sure, we'll put that together, yeah.
Cleve, could you make sure County Fire, because they are officially our agency under contract to do the lead clearing and inspecting, that they have some sort of a card if people want to sign up to have them come out and do an inspection?
Yeah, I can talk to them about that.
Yeah, that's, they came through my whole neighborhood last year, and it was very interesting to see the reactions, but it was just a chance that they picked, well, because we're out on the, we're on one of the identified perimeters of a major fire coming in out of the Weber Creek Canyon. But it'd be nice if folks could request that service because of their, as Patty mentioned, it does help with some of the insurance companies, if you can pass that, so.
Cleve, I have a contacted DOI. I have to, I have to contact Department of Insurance anyways on another issue, so I'll check and see if maybe we could get a representative here, or at least maybe have some information.
Yeah, coordinate with them.
Have some information as to what they recommend, that would be great. All right, before we run amok any further, thank you for bringing that up. The workshop is very important, and I look forward to seeing the Fire Safe Council and Mr. Zalinski and see what he's gotten done. He may still be meeting, you never know. All right, moving on to item fifteen, city manager's staff report, traffic impact mitigation program update. Is this our city engineer yet again this evening? Good evening, Mrs. Neves.
Good evening, Mayor, and council members. You may recall the TIMFE program update was created as a capital improvement project in two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen fiscal year budget adoption. And we've been working on moving that effort forward. In early March, the engineering department will be releasing a request for proposals to hire a traffic consultant to conduct the TIMFE update study and NEXUS study. The full update to the TIMFE program will include a complete traffic study with updated citywide traffic counts, an analysis of the proposed projects to be included in the TIMFE program and CIP list, updated cost estimates for the proposed projects, and the NEXUS study. The El Dorado County Transportation Commission has currently, currently contracted with a traffic consultant, preparing an implementation plan that will assist the city and county implement the SEQA changes required by Senate Bill seven forty-three, which will go into full effect January first of two thousand and twenty. For those of you may recall, Senate Bill seven, seven forty-three is the transition from going from level of service to vehicle miles traveled. EDCTC's consultant has reached a substantial completion with their work and will be presenting the implementation plan to City Council in April of two thousand and nineteen. The information presented in this implementation plan will set the framework for how our TIMFE update traffic analysis will be conducted. And so, the timing of this task actually works really well with the timing of the city selecting our consultant, and that was part of the reason why the delay, we wanted to see where the SBE seven forty-three implementation plan went. The contract with the city's consultant is expected to come before council either late April or early May of this year. The TIMFE update is expected to be completed within one year of the consultants starting their work, concluding estimated is May of two thousand and twenty. That concludes staff's rebel report. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Questions? That is good news. Thank you very much. And so, item fifteen point two is also yours, an update on the CMAC application.
Yes, thank you. On December sixth of two thousand and eighteen, the El Dorado County Transportation Commission approved and released a call for project funding for congestion mitigation and air quality, CMAC for short. This is a federal funding source offered to our region, and recipients are selected through a competitive application process. There is a local match requirement with the use of these funds, and it's structured at eleven point four seven percent of the total value of the funds. Usual applicants for this funding source include the city of Placerville, El Dorado County, Caltrans, and Sacramento Area Council of Government, Secog, as well as Transit Authority is an eligible applicant, but they rarely submit on this particular facet of the CMAC funding eligibility. On January seventh, city, county, and commission staff met to discuss the potential ineligible projects. The cities identified three projects that are ideal candidates for preparing an application, and they are listed as follows. Upper Broadway Bike Lanes and Upper Broadway Pedestrian Connection Project, construction funding. This project is located between Schnell School Road, heading east to Point View Drive, and proposes to construct a Class Two bike lane in the eastbound uphill direction and a Class Three bike route in the westbound, excuse me, westbound direction, as well as select pedestrian improvements and transit facilities. Due to the increase of recent bid prices, the project is now underfunded for construction. The proposed work is eligible under CMAC, and the application supports the construction funding shortfall. The amount to be requested is approximately one point two million dollars, which includes eleven point four seven percent local match amount, which translates to one hundred and thirty-seven thousand, six hundred and forty dollars, to the one million, sixty-two thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars in CMAC money. Construction of this project is anticipated for April of two thousand and twenty. The second application is the Placerville Station Park and Bus, is also for construction funding. This project proposes to expand and construct a transit facility on Mosquito Road, just north of Highway Fifty, adjacent to the existing park and ride lot. The project also includes constructing a Class One trail to the standards in the project vicinity. As it is with the Bike Lanes project, the previous construction funding is no longer sufficient to support the increase in recent bid pricing. The amount to be requested is seven hundred and twenty thousand total. Of that amount, seventy-five thousand represents the approximate local match. And the third application is Placerville Drive Bike and Ped facilities project, remaining this, the remaining necessary design and right-of-way funds. This project proposes construction of bicycle facilities and sidewalks on Placerville Drive from west of the US-50 undercrossing to Green Valley Road, Ray Loder Drive intersection, as well as on the west side of Green Valley Road, from Placerville Drive to Mallard Lane. This project is in the early stages of project approval and environmental documentation phase, and has been funded to date with CMAC funding from the last round of the commission's call for projects. The proposals received during the qualification-based selection process exceeded the project funding, and this application will be to secure the remaining funds for design and right-of-way to produce a shovel-ready set of bid documents as the city pursues construction funding in the future. Construction of this project is not anticipated until spring of two thousand and twenty-three. Applications are due this February on the sixth, and staff is currently working hard to meet that deadline. EDCTC will present the recommended and programming of the projects at their March seventh commission meeting, and that concludes staff's report. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you very much. I would encourage any council member that wants to see more plans or details to make an appointment with Rebecca and go into the office and do that. All right, well, I appreciate your hard work on those, especially the third one. That one has real possibilities to fix up some very deficient pedestrian access areas down there. All right, moving on to item sixteen. Upcoming items, items tentatively scheduled for our next meeting on February twelfth include, sorry, excuse me, truck purchases, paving contracts, parking lot projects, capital lease, police department annual report, I'm looking forward to that, MBI contract amendment, Upper Broadway Bike Lanes Amendment Number Four, Pacific Street Notice of Completion, and Street Furniture Improvement Agreements for Broadway Plaza and the Upper Broadway Bike Lanes. Cleve, is there anything else to add to that? I think so, too.
Mark?
Patty, did you have a question on?
And I didn't have a question. I just, I got an email from the chief about the coffee that he...
Oh, yes. Chief, would you like to highlight that briefly before we depart this evening? The Coffee with a Cop.
You're talking about Coffee with a Cop? That could be it. I got to get my calendar out because I don't remember the date.
I think it's the eighth.
Is it the eighth? Okay. So, it's, then I know the rest of the details, it's the eighth.
Excellent.
On February, from eight AM to eleven AM, at Pete's Coffee located inside Rayleigh's. So, come and join us if you have questions, comments, you would just like to meet a couple of us. I always attend those, so there'll be at least me, but I'm not the important one. It's my staff that will be there, and they enjoy interacting with our citizens. So, if they have any questions, that's the time to ask them.
Pete's Coffee, Inside Rayleigh's, on February eighth, between eight, eight.
Actually, I just pulled up your email, chief. It's February fourth.
Okay.
You lied.
I was going on a council member's thing.
I lied, I'm sorry.
I want to make sense. I remember February fourth.
I'm so glad you did that. He's always beginning to...
Eight AM to eleven AM on February fourth.
Yeah, okay, February fourth, I stand corrected. Thank you, Cleve.
We will be appearing on the eighth in your place.
It's always a well-tended event, though.
I'll go on the eighth, you go on the fourth.
Show up as a...
Some of Rayleigh's on the eighth.
We'll give Patty some stickers, and she can hand them out on the eighth, too. Kids love the stickers. All right, so, Coffee with a Cop on February fourth, Pete's Inside Rayleigh's, eight to eleven. Thank you for bringing that up, Patty. I appreciate it because it is our fun and the public does enjoy seeing our officer. All right, with that, I will adjourn us to our next regularly scheduled meeting on February twelfth, five-thirty closed session and six PM regular session. Thank you very much, and good night.